All right, we are live. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for August 4th, 2025. I spoke with councilmembers Wesley and Holt, and both were unable to make it tonight, which leads us to our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Councilmember Booker.
By his please. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord. We just thank you for this day. We thank you for the grace that you've spread amongst our nation, Lord. Just continue to bless us and keep us, Lord, and all the citizens of Mammell that we represent, Lord. Let us humbly serve them in the capacity we're supposed to serve. Bless each and every person represented in this great city and this great state of Arkansas. We just thank you, and we ask you to continue to put your hands on us, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to reply, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Booker, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Y'all received a copy of the July 21st minutes in the packet. Open the floor for discussion. A motion to approve the minutes and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That brings us to public comment cards. I have one public comment card from Mr. Pickard. Come on down. If you could please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Landry Pickard, and I live at 112 Lake Valley Drive. I would like to discuss people, allowing people to have chickens in Mammell. I think you should let Mammell have chickens. Mammell does not have a lot of happiness. Please let us have them. The amount should be five chickens. I would like to thank the council for letting me, or allowing me to speak. Have a good evening.
Well, thank you very much, sir. You came a few seconds short of the three-minute mark, but thank you for coming down. It takes a lot of courage. With that, we will move to the department report. Mr. Rayburn? You were gonna what? Who, huh?
Philip Rayborn, 1100 Edgewood Drive. I live at the community center, mostly. Well, we're halfway through the year. I've got a few numbers on our rentals. I don't know if I've ever talked about, you know, our rental. We rent rooms out at the community center. We've got Park on the River now, the Aquatic Center. We rent birthday, or time for birthday parties and stuff, so I'll just give you some numbers, and stop me if you have any questions, and we can go from there. But Park on the River, to date, we're at $12,050 for rentals at Park on the River. Lake Valencia, we typically don't rent a lot there, but we have $155. Lake Willistine, this would be for the pavilion that's out there. We, currently, we have $3,730 coming in from people renting that pavilion. The Aquatic Center has, and this isn't daily fees, this is just rentals for birthday parties, basically, and it's $10,890 we brought in. Tennis courts, again, they're not, we charge for the lights on those, and I think we brought in $145 this year due to lights. And then the Jess Oak Community Center, the room rentals up there, we have $25,500. So total, as of mid-year, is $52,516 for the things that we rent out to the community. The second half of the year, well, let me jump back to Friday. The Parks Department hosted a fishing derby that went very well, and we actually had cooler weather than expected, so we had a great turnout there. Our pool season is starting to slow down. We'll be going to modified hours on August the 11th. Charter school started today, and then PCSD will be starting, so we'll lose a lot of lifeguards. Our hours will be, Monday will still be closed. Tuesday through, let's go, Tuesday through Friday, we'll be open from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. Saturday will be noon to 7:00. Sunday will be 1:00 to 6:00. Events that are coming up, we've got, Arcsall Game Fish will be doing a couple different fishing derbies here in Mammell. They love to do them here because we have accessibility, especially on Valencia, so they like, they really like us to help host those here in Mammell. Of course, we'll have the Haunted House coming up in October. Thanksgiving will be around the corner, and then, of course, we'll have Christmas in Mammell. I haven't talked to Courtney, but I'm sure we'll be adding on to what we started last year. We'll still have the Christmas parade, so a lot of activities coming up for Mammell, and that's typically what our department runs throughout the year. We'll still have our youth sports, basketball, football, soccer, and baseball and softball. So we still got a full plate, but trying to get everything all work together. Anybody has any questions or about anything?
Any questions? Councilmember Gardner?
Mr. Rayburn, has there been any interest from residents or leagues wanting to do AstroTurf at softball, or baseball, or even a soccer field? I know we, I can't say we've lost tournaments, I'm not saying that, but I know when there's rainy seasons,
Yeah.
we're closed, right? And so I know that's an expensive undertaking, but there's a lot of demand for those fields for playing time, and finding spots, you know, somewhere in the metro area that people can use to, I'm just, this is just a general question.
Right.
Has there been any discussion about that?
Oh, yes, yeah. I mean, they've asked for turf since probably we've been out there. The Baseball Association has tried to get some funding a couple different times, but yeah, cost is very, almost prohibitive.
Okay.
One thing you have to, that we've seen over time, we used to, we used to throw our own tournaments, like, but now it's, it's individuals that are, they're bringing in all the umpires and stuff, and they'll, so basically, if we have a tournament here in Mammell, it's being actually run by another group.
Sure.
But helping out the Baseball Association or the Softball Association. Soccer doesn't do a whole lot of tournaments, but they would probably do more, and I'm smiling because Joshua Clausen, you know, part of that, and he is... Soccer's a different beast. They, they don't, I guess the easiest way to put it, they really don't care if they mess up the fields. They're gonna get out there and play regardless. So it makes it a little tougher on us, but we always get them, you know.
Yeah.
They bounce back, and we get them back up the snuff.
I know Burns has a lot more 11 v 11 space than, you know, and we only, we don't, Right, I know, yeah, I know. so, you know, we couldn't really host something like that. Okay, I just, you know, I,
Yeah, it's definitely, it would be, it'd be great to have. There's some, you know, you still gotta maintain it. You still have to use different equipment to, you know.
Fluff it?
Basically, yeah, fluff it.
Okay. But that'd be, that's a significant expense for somebody to do, whether the city does it, or we partner with us. Okay.
Right, yeah, and, and all our youth sports have always stepped up. If they want something, they usually know they're gonna have to put up something. I don't think, and it'd be the same, you know, with youth football, if we got turf out there, they would use it, but I think they're using for their games, playing turf at the high school.
Okay, okay. All right, I just, I've had residents ask me about that, and...
Yeah, and, and that's the reason most, most municipalities are going to turf, but it is a huge, huge cause.
Sure, okay.
Now, you can, it'll give and take some, because you don't have to water it. Well, some, you may sometimes to
Cool it off.
But yeah, there's a lot of give and take.
What is Conway's new facility? Is it all turf, or is it, I say,
I think
grass, or versus, or AstroTurf?
I think they've got turf, or the synthetic.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you. Were there any additional questions or comments? Let me do this. We do have a budget resolution later in the packet regarding a diving board, if y'all saw that. If anyone had any questions at this point in time regarding the diving board, while Philip is still here.
They're expensive too, but not as expensive as turf.
It looks very springy. I saw that last night, and actually, very nice.
Okay, but I won't make him hang around for the rest of the meeting for that budget resolution. Thank you, sir. The next order of business is planning commission report, and that was going to be Councilmember Holt, who is not here. Is there anyone else that wanted to volunteer and report? If not, we'll move on to the procedural motion. At this time, I'd entertain a motion. I have ordinances and resolutions read by title only. We've got a motion, a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business, but we do have a store of new business for you, with the first item of new business being Resolution 2025-30, approving a preliminary development plan. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2025-30, a resolution to approve a preliminary development plan for a proposed subdivision along Highway 365 to be called the Colson Point Edition and for other purposes. Colson?
Colson.
Colson.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. If there was no discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-30. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That brings us to the first reading of 1148, accepting the annexation of land. Madam City Clerk, if you will, please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1148, an ordinance accepting the annexation of land, commonly known as Colson Point Edition, to be titled Colson Point Annexation to the City of Mammell, Arkansas, making Colson Point Edition a part of the City of Mammell, assigning the same land to Ward 4 and for other purposes.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Gardner?
So this question would have been a lot more appropriate on the first discussion item, since we blew past that one. My question was, that's a busy highway. Has there been any discussion with RDOT about traffic? I know there's, we're doing a study on that corridor, right? Is that?
We will be participating in that study. Well, I don't know how far down it's gonna go. Currently, it's just slated for the inner, the on-ramps and off-ramps, though it has, they've indicated that those can be impacted by, obviously, area not just right there. Mr. Grummer, you and I talked about this, I think, just before the council meeting. What say you?
Scott Grummer, 550 Edgewood Drive. So as the mayor stated, with the proposed improvements to the interchange on both sides, the state has suggested that that would be something that they would provide, would be a corridor study, which is something that we're asking for to extend on further down, even past Common Go, just to understand the, the impacts to the area with future development. As far as this location, it'll be up to the developer to get all approvals from the state, as well as our city engineer, in the review of the civil plans for access.
To your, to your question, I think there was some discussion about the sort of primary access to that area being off of Frontier, not as we kind of originally thought roughly in this area, in the small area plan. Can you speak to that, Mr. Grummer?
Yes, sir. So we had originally had planned for this location to be a primary north-south kind of access point to 365 with a potential future roundabout or a light determined, based upon what the future could be, but upon further review and discussion with the engineer on the project, as well as with the state, with the state coming in with the improvements to the interchange, we're going to be requesting that the, those access ramps be integrated into the adjacent frontage roads, and one of those would be Frontier Road that would go up and wrap around the lake and create a primary access point to that area instead of where we had proposed at this Colson intersection. So that would actually save the city a lot of money down the long term without having to come in with some type of traffic mitigation at this location, but that's all gonna be determined upon future development and how things kind of grow out there. But that's kind of, we've taken our sights off of this location as being a primary point of access, and actually trying to reroute that around.
So when I look at the sketch, it's got the drive that extends onto the north, and then it heads west. Would there be like a companion road at some point that would go behind those properties to the east?
Yes, sir. It would, it would connect into that same road and go east, and then it would connect to Frontier.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that's
That's the goal.
That's the idea. We don't have ETJ anymore, so we don't...
Well, this is really, I guess, our first parcel that we've kind of talked about, that we don't have ETJ on anymore, and they could do whatever they want in the county
Right.
right now.
So, and so we'll be following the same process that we followed on other parcels that have been in, outside of our boundary, but adjacent. All the approvals are contingent upon annexation into the city, as well as review by us. If they do not annex, and they have to go back through the county process, so it's, it's a win-win for the city to get some extra land in right there at the interchange and help growth in the area.
And I think the properties to the east of this are already in Mammell?
Yes, sir.
And then the ones to the west, I know there's a lot of parcels in there. Oh, there it is, there, yeah. A lot of those parcels are not in Mammell, on that side of 365.
Well, and I believe all the adjacent parcel owners are interested in annexing into the city. I think it's a matter of working together, all the property owners, to help plan the area out so that we can have good access, and so that's, this will help set a chain, chain of events, hopefully, that will help spur the rest of that area.
When we look at this, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what page of the PDF I'm on. The one that had the road that extends on, this isn't something that we are, are we approving that road? This is not part of a plat yet, is it?
That's just a proposed, they're, they're going to actually provide emergency access, so that is gonna be a secondary access.
Okay.
It won't be an improved road, other than to meet the requirements of emergency vehicles.
Sure. And I'm just asking that, because I love the idea of having that access off of three, away from 365. I think that's, that's a great idea, but I could tell that this wasn't an official document in the sense of, we weren't approving, you know, a plat or whatever. I may be using the wrong word there, but yeah.
Well, the, and, so right now, all of these will take their access off of 365, but in the future, we're hoping that as the area grows, the primary location will be towards Frontier.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting, which brings us to the next agenda item, the first reading of ordinance 1149, amending the land use plan for Colson Point Edition. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1149, an ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map for the Colson Point Edition and for other purposes.
I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next council meeting. That brings us to the next agenda item, which is the first reading of ordinance 1150, amending the zoning map for Colson Point Edition. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1150, an ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map for Colson Point Edition and for other purposes.
Open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next council meeting. That brings us to Resolution 2025-31, amending the 2025 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2025-31, a resolution to amend the 2025 general fund budget.
All right, this is the resolution that allows us to restructure some of the positions in the mayor's office and in planning, and move some of the more economic development type duties from the mayor's office into planning, which would probably be called something else. And then, just as a refresher and a reminder, the idea was to take the, to eliminate the communication coordinator position, to add in a position for, that's basically community engagement, which is taking the position currently occupied by Courtney, which is community and economic development, and in some ways pulling the community development side away from the economic development side. To those who know community and economic development, what I'm saying doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because they're so interrelated, but we think some duties and tasks are more what I'll call community development, and wrapping that in with community, with communication into a position that's more akin to community engagement, and then taking the economic development duties and rolling them into planning. That'll probably be the Department of Planning and Economic Development, and then just restructuring a few things along those lines. So I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. I will say this, that, that is using funds from the elimination of the city engineer position, which has sat vacant for the last few years, and we've had zero applicants, and I have, before that job was even posted, I was reaching out to people to try and get it. We're just not gonna be able to hire a, a city engineer, a staff city engineer at that price. So it's not a increase to the budget, just a shifting. I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. If there is none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-31. Did I, was there a second to that?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We will move on to Resolution 2025-32, amending the 2025 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2025-32, a resolution to amend the 2025 general fund budget.
All right, this is for that diving board that I mentioned earlier, and yes, it's about a $7,500 diving board, and originally, we pulled that money from two different line items, and we're just hopeful that nothing else would break, and we weren't gonna have to use those, as we kind of expected those did, and so we want to refill those line items. I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-32. Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That brings us to the final resolution, which is 2025-33, regarding surplus property. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2025-33, a resolution to approve the sale of three surplus vehicles.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. The final item of new business, there's no corresponding resolution or ordinance, but it's an important one, because we have talked in the past about bonds, going out for various bonds. We've talked about multiple different projects, ranging from completing the purchases at the future police and fire training facility, to an indoor pool at the senior center, center on the lake, and others. And I brought it up in the past, we really want to solidify the method by which the council will be looking at these projects. For those that are, that haven't been around for a bond election, those projects come to the city council, they get voted on yes or no. If it's yes, it goes on the ballot, and then the residents vote on it. If it's no, that item doesn't go on to the ballot. In the past, the city has used all different sorts of methods to determine what those sorts of projects would be, ranging from just being, the council being presented with the projects, to a full-on multi-month task force committee that went through this whole thing, and recommendations to the council, and surveys sent out to the public to gauge interest. And so we really, I'm really looking for guidance as to what the council expects to see in that process. If we want to just all throw out, because it's, it's, we have to have numbers for it, and so if the council is just gonna throw out projects, then I'll have to go talk to, which is fine. I'm just saying, we can't just vote on a project. You need the project and the money, and preferably enough money to complete the project, and so on. So I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion here. Councilmember Gardner?
I just quickly would say, I think whatever you do, it's going to have to have community buy-in and support, and if this comes from the council or the city, I think it would be met with a healthy dose of skepticism. And so I think what, so I think there needs to be community engagement in this process, is what I'm getting at. I think there are some very, you know, needed projects that we have, but it would be nice to have residents participate in that, because we, we kind of get stuck in our view of what needs to happen, what, what projects we think are good, and sometimes maybe those aren't the best ideas, you know. I just think we have to have community buy-in. You don't want to go through this process, throw something out there for it to just be soundly rejected by the residents. I just, you know, I want to make sure whatever is, is put out there is, it's a good plan that the residents support enough to put on the ballot.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Thank you, sir. Councilmember Tierney?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear us, you know, considering ways to try to make an indoor pool at the senior city center happen. This is something that's just had, you know, remember Gardner was talking about community buy-in. This is something the community's been buying in on for a long time since I was first elected. This has been like the hot topic that everybody says, this is what we want to see happen in our community. You know, I do post a lot of material on my website, which generates about a quarter million hits a month. But if I mention indoor swimming pool, bam, I'll get thirty hits, thirty thousand hits in a single day. So that's not visits, that's hits, because people just want to know all the details they can find out about it. There is immense interest in making this happen.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
What's your idea?
Well, I kind of, I can only think of two things, or two things keep coming to mind. One is just proposing the projects we've talked about in one form or the other. I think, well, we've talked about all the projects that I'd be thinking about. That doesn't mean there's not other projects that might give buy-in that don't have a, that we haven't discussed at this point. The, so on one hand, there's just proposing it. On the other, I completely understand the idea of what you're saying, which is this, this idea for community engagement in that process. The, I suppose that could happen in a whole lot of different ways. In the last time we had this sort of bond task force committee, it was, it went, it was for the series thirteen and fourteen bonds, maybe the series fifteen, I don't recall. And that was putting together a task force comprised of several council members and members from the public. And in that case, the person who ran it, I think, did a masterful job in tackling a behemoth way. And so, you know, that is duplicatable, that took a fair amount of time. I'm meeting with bond counsel and the underwriters later this week to try to back into a calendar. If we're looking at a March election, then there are certain things that have certain deadlines. So a, a task force or committee would probably have to really get on the ball to do that. And that, just brainstorming, there's other ways, I suppose, that it could be done to solicit feedback or engagement. I do think it's important, and the city's always, in my opinion, done a good job of this. It is, at the very least, once those ordinances were passed, going out and promoting or making the public aware of what those projects were through public hearings, through public meetings with speakers, with people coming in and asking questions and learning about them. Sometimes very come-and-go sort of meetings, where you go into, say, the south room, and there's a map set up, and you're explaining what's going on. To, I've seen entire churches full of people show up to ask questions and like. So I've seen it all different sorts of ways. And I'm really trying to solicit if the, if coming up with a process prior, a public involvement process prior to the council voting on those, I really want some feedback on what that is supposed to look like, what the council's guidance or direction on that is.
I'll push my button, Michelle, if you have to talk too. Well, let me just, in regards to what I said earlier about having a community, or a community engagement, be it a committee or whatever, I'm not one that normally likes committees to some degree. And I think we were put here as elected representatives of the people to make decisions for the residents. And, but you also have to get that bond issue passed. And that's kind of what I was going at with getting community buy-in. So whatever is being proposed, it would be, whether we do a survey, and we've done some surveys through the city that have actually gotten good responses on typical projects. If we, I'm just trying to think of what we could do to make something have a higher chance of success if that's the path we're going to go down. You know, one of the things that you could, we could discuss is the White Oak Crossing project, which is scheduled to pay off early, and then we've also received some funds back as well on that. But, you know, there's, whenever you're talking about taking on debt, there are a lot of people that that brings up concerns for them. But a lot of cities also do it very regularly. And we've just, I think, been in a unique situation where we've not had to do new debt, except for the White Oak Crossing, which was significant. So, I don't know. I just wanted to have a high likelihood of whatever projects we're doing is making Mammell a better place for down the road, and it's what the residents want to do.
Just to follow up on that, I'm not sure if I've announced this to the council or not. We, I know I haven't announced that we refunded approximately one point five million dollars on the interchange project. For those that don't recall, that was put out for a ballot or a bond issue election in two thousand eighteen. It's a series two thousand eighteen bonds. And the, at the last minute after that was passed, Mayor Watson and the city was able to secure a million-dollar grant through Metro Plan. That grant money has sat with the trustee until the closeout of the project. And a month or two ago, maybe the end of May, June, I don't recall exactly, the state sent us a check back for approximately half million dollars. I was waiting to get some sort of closeout letter from them, saying that the project's closed, and not just a check that says, you know, in the memo line, refund from that project. We held onto that million dollars for quite a while. We actually thought that there was going to be overages due to change orders, and then some financial incentives the contractor was able to get for completing the project early. You know, so every day early, they got a bonus. So we held onto that money, waiting for that project to be closed out because we don't, we don't get the invoices. When we pass, unlike most projects where we're paying the checks and managing the project, with the interchange project, we cut a check and hand it to RDO, and they manage that process. So we took a couple of years and a, what feels like a couple thousand emails for them to come out and close out the financials and say this project is financially closed out. I don't know if it is or not, but I know that the city's, from operating under the belief that the city's financial obligations are no more. So we essentially refunded those bonds, which means technically, this is, these bonds were issued in two thousand eighteen, so we're seven years past that, and we're already five years in advance with that refunding and with the fact that we've been paying off. So we're paying, the next bond payment goes to pay off the twenty thirty bonds. So that's pretty interesting. But Councilmember Shin?
I was just going to support as much community involvement as we can after watching what happened in Bryant with their last attempted bond issue. It was for fire and parks, and they got it handed right back to them. Because the public didn't buy into it, the council did, or their leadership did. So we really need to plan this out, have a lot of involvement in it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Grunell?
Well, so I agree with everything that we just said. I'm a big fan of surveys, I'm a bigger fan of getting the public involved in things like this. Interestingly, at CDI last week, there was somebody in my class that talked about this very issue. They mentioned the Bryant issue as well, but, so it's hard to be put on the spot like this and come up with brilliant ideas. But survey, hundred percent, and getting the community involved, absolutely. I think, although it was a different kind of issue, I think the way that we handled the pickleball courts and getting the public involved, and what do we call that? Not the gateway park, but the connecting, yeah, connecting the club manner issue. I think we did a really, really good job in getting the public involved in that. I would like to see more of that. And I can certainly go back at my notes and see what that one city did, because they did a great job, and they got it, they got it fast, but, yeah. So I agree with the public involvement, for sure.
Great, so surveys, I'm hearing. And this isn't, this isn't an issue, I've just finally put, I've brought it up multiple times over the last number of months. And so I'm going to, it'll be on every single council meeting's agenda until I get a good idea of what the council would like to see with that regard. And I can take the input that you're giving, brainstorm with staff, and kind of come up with proposals to see if that works too. I'm not punting it entirely, I just know that having witnessed this and been a part of this for over a decade now, that the last thing we want is to get to the, because when we're, by the time we're running ordinances, you're basically running emergency clause ordinances because the ordinance has in it the numbers that are, the numbers that are needed for the issuance of the bond, so like the specific market rates and stuff. So they've got like ten days to sell them from the passage of the ordinance. So once that point comes forward, it goes really quick. So I'm just trying to make sure we get as, as much buy-in and on the same page as to what we're trying to do as early as possible. And I don't know that we can actually call this early, but I'm hearing surveys.
Can you, can you, before our next meeting, actually go to some of our other surrounding sister cities and bring some of that back to the council?
As to?
I feel like that's more in your realm rather than, than us.
Go to them and get what?
To go to, like, like a Bryant, figure out what worked for them, what didn't work for them, how did they get public buy-in, and bring that back to the council?
Sure, and I can share, you know, what I already know is, the, and you mentioned the specific city, I'd be happy to go there. Think of conversations I've had with different mayors as this comes up every time someone gets a bond issuance. And so there's, there's a lot of places that just pass the ordinances and then go into full overdrive in terms of getting out and explaining what these projects are and what the value is, to things as extensive as what we did for the, in two thousand thirteen, which was the committee, I mean, anybody could submit a project that had a project. I mean, and it was, it was very interesting process. So I'd be happy to look into specific cities and come back with what.
Looking for specific ideas about public, getting public buy-in, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, you mentioned the ci, if you want to holler at me sometime, about a particular city that had a method.
Well, I mean, I can go back and look at the notes, but I'm, I'm hoping that you can find some other cities. I mean, I, I can.
So just start calling people?
Well, how, well, how would I do? I would do the same thing, right?
No, I, you had mentioned a specific city that did something.
And I'm going to bring that to you, but like, if there's another one that, that maybe you know has gone through this and gotten public, maybe, maybe you don't know.
The best one I've ever heard of, the most thorough one I've ever heard of, is the one that we did in two thousand thirteen. But I, I, yeah, I can see what I can find out. Councilmember Gardner?
You mentioned backing into the dates with bond counsel and seeing when we would need to do what and by when and all that. So we have two chances, right? The primary and then the general election, or those are two opportunities to put this on a ballot? Because we can't do special elections per state law, I don't, didn't they change that?
I believe they did. I've never been a fan of special elections.
Right, that's, so, but I guess my question is, is this something that you want to do by the primary? Or does it need to wait till the general?
I think so. I would prefer it to be a, the March, I'll have to look at the, I'll have to follow back up with the, with the, with the deadlines and dates to see how that works, backing it in. And then to see how it works with the anticipated payoff of the current bonds. But I'm, I'm meeting with them later this week, so I can have more information on that at the next.
So this would be something that would pay off, refinance, whatever you want to call it. Rolling our current bonds?
Yes, so what we would, you recall the, the other bonds and reissue new bonds. So the two thousand eighteen bonds, assuming, as we've talked about in the past, but I haven't got full guidance from the council on that. If it were my druthers, we'd renew the sales tax instead of re-implementing the property tax that went away. We had a six point six mils on property tax that went away. And we let those bonds pay off, and so everyone's taxes on their homes have gone down. I think that if the council wanted to go with the mileage option, that you could do something less than six point six mils. But I'd encourage the sales tax over the property tax in this specific instance because the property tax is paid exclusively by people who own land in Mammell. Sales tax is paid by anybody who shops in Mammell. And so the argument being that you're getting people who don't even live here but are traveling through or stopping through that are helping us reduce that debt. And then that burden isn't entirely on the people that own property. So, but those are different timelines, yeah.
Is there a total amount in your head of, I say amount. So if you, if you're recalling the current bond, whatever that amount is we have to pay off, on top of that, what new amount are we thinking?
As to, as to the amount that could be?
Yeah, it could be.
I believe it is right around twenty-two million.
Okay. Now, would that, twenty-two new or twenty-two?
Twenty-two new.
After the old debt is paid off?
Correct.
Okay.
So the reissuance of the bond would be, I believe, I didn't memorize these numbers. I believe we're at four and a quarter million after the one point seven mil, million-dollar payments we just authorized and sent over, which is different than the one point five, but anyways, the, there were some, we usually collect more than we are, than the payment. So we always collect a little bit more, so anyways, one point seven. I think we have four point two, so it'd be, if it's twenty-two, it'd be twenty-six and a half, somewhere around there. So yeah, it's twenty-two new money for projects, which does not mean you have to spend that all. In fact, don't if you don't have a good project that's already kind of in the queue. And you don't want projects that are too cheap. Because you have to write, the bond, every bond issue and project has to be, has to be able and make financial sense to issue bonds for if that's the only one that passes. So you could have ten projects, and if only one passes, but it's a fifty thousand dollar bond issuance, it just makes no sense, so you wouldn't do that. Typically, at least back in the decade ago, the number was about a million. You didn't want, you didn't, it just made no sense at all to issue bonds on anything less than a million dollars. I assume that number is higher now. It might be closer to one point five or two million dollar projects. Anything below that threshold does not make sense for a bond project.
And would this be like a shopping list where voters can pick and choose which projects they support? Or are we looking at packaging everything in one?
So, well, there's, there's certain limitations that we can do for that. So the sorts of things you would see is, and you could package some things together that make sense. So the sorts of things you would see is, and you could package some things together that make sense together. Let's say you were doing Lake Valencia boardwalk replacement with the pavilion and some trail enhancements. Even though those are kind of separate things, that can be one project. But, and I have some questions for bond council related to this. I don't, and I think you could also come in and say, hey, we have, if you're looking at our street preservation program, we've moved to the philosophy of saying the, the roads that are already Ds and Fs, we're going to let fail because the cost to repair those is exponentially higher than the cost to take a C road and push it back up to an A, either through ceiling or through pavement. And so as we're letting some of the roads fail because we have higher costs, and I say fail, we're talking about roads that are still safe to drive on and are crumbling or, or the like, but are just getting to the point that they need more, more than just an overlay. I think we could group some of those roads in and just elevate that right at the, the baseline. Otherwise, we're going to start encountering years where the entire street fund overlay budget is going to repair a small project. So I think you can group things together, but you, yes. Typically, there are numerous different projects. Some could pass, some could fail. And the last one, save the interchange, was?
The lift station?
Yeah, you had, well, you had the, the wastewater on the north end of town failed. The, oh, the interchange was part of that. So the interchange passed, the wastewater improvements in North Mammell failed. And the, is that the one where we also added the half cent public safety tax? But eliminated the community service fee?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I have something to go off of to present those options to the council. And does anyone have anything else to say about it at this time? Then we will move on to mayor's comments. I included these in the FYI section, but it, I think it's still worth noting that the city received the White, the engineer, a grant for engineering the White Oak Bayou Trail in the amount of $315,000. So that'll cover the engineering for the trail that'll go through, that's at, that's an 80/20 grant. So we'll owe, we'd have to do a budget resolution for somewhere around 79,000 to cover that. But that will go on the area that we got the hundred percent grant through for the White Oak Crossing Green Network and Preservation of the Bayou. So that's exciting. We also received and were awarded the two, just shy of 2.5 million dollars, an 80/20 grant for the roundabout on Club Manor and Odom. So that's exciting. That'll be, that, because it's 80/20, we'll need to match with about 620,000 from the city plus engineering, some of the engineering costs that we'll have to get, the spend, since we've made some changes to the connecting road and since there's a greenway going through that. I don't have those numbers yet, but I love free money. Unfortunately, those projects move slowly. And the only other thing I had was the bond refunding, which I've already told you about. So we'll move on to councilmember comments. Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, I just wanted to go back to something you've mentioned, just to confirm that I heard you right. We did get a 2.5 million grant to build the roundabout at Odom and Club Manor.
Yes.
Good, that's great news.
It's actually $2,480,000. But we've been really successful with these grants through Metro Plan because of the focus on the greenway and sort of leveraging off of those. So while, while it's a roundabout, what we're selling it as to get the grant awards is improved pedestrian and cycling crossings and safety in that area. So we've been kind of stacking those up in this area. And hopefully, we are this close to being given the go-ahead on Club Manor corridor project itself.
Well, that's great news. Thank you.
And if you haven't seen Gateway Park in a while, there's, they're not just moving dirt around anymore. There's stuff popping out there. Yeah. Councilmember Williams?
This may be a question for councilmember Gronwell and Chad. So.
Councilmember Gronwell.
Councilmember Gronwell and Chad. So we had money left over from the, the playground monies that were left over that were refunded back to the city. And that money was to be used for repairs and maintenance and, is that right, for the playground?
That was actually never designed, I don't think.
I'm sorry. Pardon me? Could you say that again?
The monies that were left over for the, the, the playground project was that money that was, that was earmarked for repairs and maintenance and things like that.
So the project was upside down, about $66,000. So what we will, when we got that returned money from Timmons Art, or when we got that donation from Timmons Arts Foundation, that money was applied to that project. So as we close that project out during the budget process, we'll have to appropriate about another $20,000 to balance that out and close it out.
Okay. The reason I'm bringing that up is we need additional seating at the splash pad. And we need money for that. And we need to look at that because us grannies have nowhere to sit when we're watching our kiddos out here at the splash pad and we're baking our brains out, so we need shade. So if, we need to, we need to look at this. This is, this is not just, this is a health issue as far as I'm concerned because it's been 113 degrees and we've been sitting out there just, I mean, melting. So, and melting on the ground because we, we don't have seating. So I think that's something that we really do need to look at in the future, in the not-too-distant future for, for our people. We have people coming from out of town. There was a couple there that I met from Waco. They just ventured off the interstate and trying to find a place to cool off. And, and so it's not just for us. And it's, and that was brought up by the people from Waco, that there was absolutely nowhere to sit. And I said, yeah, I'll have to look into that for you. But anyway, I want us to take that seriously and look at that for the future. I think it's, I, I don't know if it was something, I don't think it was an oversight or something. We just didn't know when we were planning this, that, you know, it was going to be this hot or this uncomfortable.
Or this well-attended.
Yeah, absolutely.
There are a few things, but it is.
Yeah, it has, it has exploded.
To that point, I've already asked Mr. Rayburn to be sure to include some budget items in the budget for those.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you. I know we talked about it, but I didn't know if you heard me. So thank you.
Heard is easy, remembering to tell Philip to add it to the budget, not as easy, but both were accomplished. Any additional councilmember comments? City attorney comments? City clerk comments? If there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I've got a motion. Second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. All those opposed, no. Motion passes. We are adjourned.